All right, thank you very much, SCL TV. The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Present.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Present.
Alderman Page.
Present.
Alderwoman Negrasia.
Present.
Alderman Calder. Alderwoman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer.
Present.
Alderwoman Howard.
Present.
Alderwoman Green.
Present.
Alderman Odenberg.
Present.
Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd.
Present.
Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman McCorro.
Present.
And Orion. Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Alderman Cone is present.
Thank you. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Here.
Alderman Grass.
Here.
President Ballmer.
Present.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Stevens. I'm sorry, after Alderman Bosley's Alderman Calder. Alderman Stevens.
Stevens is here.
Alderwoman Peel. Alderwoman Davis.
Present.
Alderman Orion. Nineteen present.
Alderwoman Spencer's present.
Oh, sorry, thank you. Twenty present.
All right, twenty members present, we have a forum. We will be led in prayer today by Pastor David A. Katron of the Planting of the Lord Church. Pastor Katron, please take it away.
Thank you, Father. Because of your grace, we thank you this day for all the goodness, the mercies, the kindness that you've shown toward each and every one of us. For these, the servants that you have assigned to minister and to stand guard in place for thy people, we give you the glory, the honor, and the praise for it. Again, this day, you've made it, you've given us health and strength, and God, we bless you for it. I pray your continued grace upon this chamber. God, as they go, to do the business for the people. Let us all be reminded to have the heart of the servant that we would be sensitive to the needs that are found in the communities in which we reside. But God, that you would give us the guidance on how not just to govern in this moment, but even for time to come. I pray grace upon every representative that's gathered here today. And I will pray even as they are seeing about the needs of the people. I pray that you would see about the needs of these thy servants. I pray you would go into their homes, the secret prayers and the desires that they have of thee. I would touch and I would agree with them now that as long as they are in position to acknowledge you in all of their ways, you guarantee that you would direct their paths. So be gracious to these thy servants and be gracious as we go forward in the business of this day. For these things, we shall be mindful to give you glory, all the honor and all the praise that shall be thine. It's in the name of the Lord Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Pastor. Thanks for taking time off from your busy day to lead us. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we will dispense with line item three, introduction of honor guests. Anyone have any honor guests to recognize? Alderwoman twenty-third, you have your hand up.
As always.
We lost you, sir.
Oh. And I don't know why, as, as always, Greg Meyer is my special guest.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks for joining us, Greg. Alderwoman from the fourth, your hand is up.
Okay. I clicked it and then it clicked back off. Okay. Yes, as my honored guest today, I'd like to have as my brother and his wife from New York City that's here visiting. So I'd like to have them as my honored guests today.
Welcome, welcome to both of them. Thank you very much. Hope they enjoy their stay. Alderwoman from the nineteenth, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. President. And members of the board, I'd like to have as my honored guest today Lieutenant Colonel Dwayne Buckingham, former St. Louis city resident, former masters in psychology, currently has his doctorate, they're here from Washington DC. And I'm just honored to see him and so many of the black men of this country, not just the city of St. Louis, that are reaching out and embracing our young people to give them guidance. All of you are my guests today. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And welcome to them. Alderwoman from the second, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, today as my honored guest, I have Pre Middlebrook, I have Tyler is here, I have Jackson, and then I have my sister as my honored guest. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much. Grab your hands folder. All right, Alderwoman from the fourteenth, you're next.
I'd like to have as my honored guest today, Mr. David Sweeney. He's on, on the call here, so welcome him and he is my honored guest. Thank you.
Welcome to David. Fortunately, we can't see his clothing then. Okay. All right, anyone else? We have Alderwoman twenty-fifth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today is National Chocolate and Almond Day. So to celebrate, sometimes you feel like a nut from the twenty-third ward and sometimes you don't.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, we'll move on to line item five, approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes dated Thursday, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Alderwoman twenty-fifth, you're recognized for approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we approve the minutes from our meeting June thirtieth.
Second.
All right, I saw a second from the Alderwoman from the fourth, so it's been moved by the Alderwoman twenty-fifth, second by the Alderwoman from the fourth. That we approved the minutes of the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Report to city officials.
Report to city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes.
All right, we will go to line item seven. We will dispense with line item seven. Board bills for perfection, informal calendar, would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions off of any of the informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions off any of the informal calendars? Okay, we will dispense with line items eight through ten. First ring of board bills.
Board Bill Seventy sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus and ordinance approving of redevelopment plan dated June third, twenty twenty-two for the seventeen zero six through seventeen twenty North Kings Highway Boulevard area. Board Bill Seventy-one sponsored by Alderwoman Negrasia and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment authorizing the City of St. Louis Department of Health to accept a grant of, a grant from the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration containing an emergency clause. That's extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the HUSS Committee, Board Bill Seventy to Health and Human Services, Board Bill Seventy-one, that's extent of reference to committee.
Thank you very much. Second reading and report of standing committees.
The following board bill was reported out of Health and Human Services with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill Sixty-nine sponsored by Alderwoman Negrasia and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment authorizing the City of St. Louis Department of Health to enter into a cost reimbursement sub award agreement with the St. Louis County, Missouri for up to one hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-five cent through August thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and for the same amount of one hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-five cent for two additional one-year terms, three hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-five cent over three years, enabling the DOH to hire two community health workers, authorizing the expenditure of grant, grant funds by entering into contracts or otherwise for grant purposes and containing an emergency clause. Following board bill was reported out of HUD with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill Fifty-six Committee Sub sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment wherein the Board of Alderman authorizes the receipt of an appropriate funds under a sub-grantee agreement between the City of St. Louis and the State of Missouri Department of Economic Development and Missouri Housing Development Commission, funds by the federal grant under the Consolidated Appropriations Act, twenty twenty-one Public Law, one one six dash two six zero, section five zero one, to establish the Emergency Rental Assistance Program for emergency rental and housing assistance payments by local governments and containing emergency clause. Following board bill was reported out of Public Safety with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill Forty-six, I'm sorry, Forty-seven Committee Sub as amended sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard and the following other persons. Norrian, Boyd, Cone, Davis, Negrasia, Todd, Page, Rice, Peel, and Middlebrook. The proposed bill provides for independent investigation of law enforcement misconduct and use of force incidents. The bill repeals for ordinance number six nine nine eight four as amended by ordinance number seven zero five three two and enacts in lieu thereof an ordinance that reconstitutes and provides staff support for the civilian oversight board and provides coordination and staff support for the detention facility oversight board created under ordinance seven one four three zero. The bill also established the division of civilian oversight within the Department of Public Safety and authorizes the establishment of the Public Integrity Unit directed by the Circuit Attorney, Circuit Attorney in the City of St. Louis. That's extent of second reading, report of standing committees.
Thank you very much, Rita. We'll dispense with line item fourteen. Perfection consent.
Board Bill Fifty-eight as amended sponsored by Alderman Bosley and ordinance relating to the position, classification, salaries of the employees in the Treasurer's Office repealing ordinance six nine one nine five and enacting in lieu thereof certain new sections relating to the same subject matter and containing an emergency clause. The provisions of the section contained in this ordinance shall be effective June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Board Bill Fifty-nine as amended sponsored by Alderman Bosley and ordinance relating to the position, classification, and salaries of the employees in the parking division repealing ordinance six nine one nine six and enacting in lieu thereof certain new sections relating to the same subject matter and containing an emergency clause. The provision of the section contained in this ordinance shall be effective June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. That is the extent of perfection consent calendar.
Thank you. Alderwoman from the twenty-fifth, you are recognized for approval of the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we approve the perfection consent calendar.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by the Alderwoman twenty-fifth, second by the Alderwoman from the fourth, that we approve our perfection consent calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. By your vote, you sustain the motion, Alderman. Twenty-fifth and approve perfection consent calendar. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill Sixty-one Committee Sub sponsored by Alderwoman Rice and the following other persons. Peel, Clark Hubbard, Negrasia, Calder, Green, Switzer, Gunther, Todd, Cone, Grass, Stevens, Middlebrook, and Norrian. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment appropriation, appropriating a portion of funds received under the Missouri Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one to the St. Louis Department of Health, authorizing contracts to expand the funds to the extent received contain the severability clause and an emergency clause.
All right. Alderwoman from the eighth, you're recognized on perfection of Board Bill Sixty-one Committee Sub.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to move that we perfect Board Bill Sixty-one Committee Sub.
Second.
Again.
All right, we have a motion from the second, from the Alderwoman from the sixth. Alderwoman from the eighth, please proceed.
Thank you so much. Mr. President, members of the board, I'm honored to be bringing this bill forward at this moment in time because of the challenges we face that our residents face. They, it requires us to meet this moment head-on. This bill is a collaborative work, is grown from the outreach of Dr. Love Holt at Pro Choice Missouri talking directly with St. Louisans about the care that they need and from years of organizing and fighting with everything we had to prevent coming to this catastrophic moment. Dr. Love's conversations with St. Louis mothers and people who could become pregnant identified four top priorities. Full spectrum doula care throughout pregnancy, abortion, pregnancy loss, birth and postpartum recovery, mental health care throughout, logistical support for accessing abortion care and lactation support. So even before we knew that Roe would fall and every Missourian who can get pregnant's bodily autonomy with it, we were working to find ways to help some of the people already most deeply impacted by COVID nineteen and already limited in their reproductive health care to get the care that they needed. The Turnaway Study, a study that was done over the course of a decade, showed us that pregnant people who are denied abortions have higher rates of preeclampsia and death at the end of their pregnancy. They're more likely to remain tethered to an abusive partner. They're four times more likely to be living below the poverty level and their children are less likely to meet developmental milestones than the children of women who were granted abortions. Missouri already has abysmal maternal mortality rates, especially for black women, with black women four times more likely to die one year postpartum. We have the ability to use this money to fund organizations already in the community working to connect people to their needed health care with the added barriers that are now in front of them. Merely crossing the river isn't going to be enough when centers are reporting three hundred percent increases in calls since Roe fell. The first call I got to help connect someone with resources was about a child. A child not even out of middle school. The anger that I felt, that I feel that our state legislators put the people trying to care for this young child in, questioning whether they'd be risking criminalization for getting help when all this child needs is help and no more fear and shame. This is wrong. No one's story needs to be this devastating to also be an utter failure of bodily autonomy and health care access. It is merely that someone else claims that they have a right to your body without your consent. We can use this money to help organizations be available to respond to difficult situations. The ARPA money has no restrictions on abortion care. It is different from federal funding in that way. We know that the people who are most impacted by COVID nineteen are already mothers and particularly black mothers and black people here in the city of St. Louis specifically. This proposal lines out four priorities. So a million dollars to reproductive equity fund for access to abortion. So this is logistical care, transportation, childcare, whatever logistics are needed to help folks who need it to get the abortions that they require. It is five hundred million dollars for reproductive health care access, including work that was identified by the St. Louis Doula Project and by Pro Choice Missouri. So everything from the doula work, bringing someone through a pregnancy and birth and aftercare and lactation support. And then there's two hundred and fifty million dollars of, or sorry, not million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of administrative oversight that goes into this bill. There's also one point six three six million dollars for federally qualified healthcare centers for vaccinations, for testing, and for treatment for COVID nineteen because the federal money for those programs has been cut. And we have the ability to step in and help out those centers. And there's also five hundred thousand dollars included for continuing the vaccination incentive gift cards. They, the Health Department has found those successful and we know that as COVID nineteen numbers are back on the rise, that we're facing dangerous and deadly incredibly transmissible variants that we need to make sure that folks are getting the boosters that they need. And now that children, six months to five years are eligible for vaccines, we have a whole new pocket of our population that we need to incentivize to get vaccinated. So I am grateful to be bringing this, this board bill forward, like I said, with an incredible coalition of people and support behind, and I would request your favorable consideration on Board Bill Sixty-one. And I'll yield for questions.
Okay, Alderwoman from the twenty-third, you had your hand up first, please proceed.
Yeah, I, I have issues with this and that, anything to do with pro-life or pro-choice. But to tie up a little over four million dollars that the Attorney General has already said he's going to sue, the mayor said, yes, we inspect suits. It will be tied up in courts for roughly, probably years. I see this as nothing more than a political stunt and it does no good for anybody. In fact, by putting the COVID money in there, it kind of messes that up for quite a long while too, because this will be in court. I mean, there was no question about it. I, I look at this as, you know, more of a, just a, a, a political stunt because it has no merit. If you're putting a bill together that you know is going to court, that the Attorney General said, I'm going to take it to court. The mayor said, we inspected to go to court. This is going to tie up four million dollars, in my opinion, that could be used. You know, I, I, I understand and I get the, the, the you know, the, the decision from you know, Roe that has upset a lot of people, but this is not about that. Because this does nothing but tie up four million dollars in court and it'll also cost us money to defend it. And, and it's been real clear. I mean, I got the Attorney General said he will sue over this. It's not might, it was will. The mayor said she inspects lawsuits. So why would we, in good conscience, tie up four million dollars plus for something we know isn't going to help anyone? And if it does, it's going to be three or four or five years down the road as, as it moves through the court system. You know, that, that's just my statement and that's why I can't, can't support this. And again, it, it, it just sounds wrong to me to say, gee, we want to tie up four million dollars on something we know we're going to be sued over. Anyway, that's, that's, you know, and if, if we do, I want to roll call. I can't, I can't support this solely on the reason and solely on the reason that we've already been told this will go to court. And nobody, nobody, what I know of would think that that's a good idea. And I would think anybody would have to understand that this is going to be tied up in court for years. So this is not a fix. It's a, if, I, I use the word stunt, but it, it, politically it says, gee, you know what, we're supporting it. But we're not, because on the surface, we can say something, but knowing full well, this will never get enacted for years. Anyway, that, that, that's solely why, you know, otherwise I, you know, probably wouldn't have much of an issue, but to, 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 to say, well, I'm going to support something that's going to be in court, cost us money. I can't support that. Anyway, I, I'll let it go with that.
Right, thank you, thank you very much, Alderwoman. Alderwoman from the sixth, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I am rising in support of Board Bill Sixty-one today. I think we have an incredible opportunity in this moment at the local level to really show the rest of our state and the nation what a response in this moment can look like. We are still recovering from the COVID nineteen pandemic. In fact, it's still ongoing. We have a very serious maternal mortality crisis here in St. Louis and the state of Missouri. And with the fall of Roe, I think that now more than ever, we have an opportunity similar to what we did with minimum wage to let our state in our country know that we think differently here in the city of St. Louis. And I don't think that we should be scared of the potential for a lawsuit. We have had to fight back and have won before on preemption for certain things. But I don't think that's what we should be focused on today. Though there is a severability clause in the bill. And so if there's any part of this that would be deemed as not able to move forward, the rest of the funding would be able to do that. And I just have one question, if the Alderwoman from the eighth would yield.
Want to say, Alderwoman from the eighth, will you yield the questions from Alderwoman from the sixth?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to clear up that the maternal or the equity fund would be for five hundred thousand dollars and not five hundred million dollars.
You're right. I misspoke there. Thanks for the clarification. So it's, it's actually two pieces of the same reproductive equity fund. The, the one million dollars is for abortion logistics and support and the five hundred thousand is for the, the rest of the reproductive health care supports and access. And we're hoping that we can make that a continuing fund with the city of St. Louis, that this is, that that doesn't need to just be a one-time infusion.
Thank you, Alderwoman. I have no further questions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderwoman from the sixth. Alderwoman from the fourteenth, you're next.
Will the Alderwoman from the eighth yield for questions?
Alderwoman from the eighth, will you yield the questions from the Alderwoman from the fourteen?
Yes.
Please proceed, Alderwoman.
Um. Alderwoman, where is your fiscal note on this bill?
We don't attach them in the cases of the ARPA bills.
I don't.
Because it's a grant, since it's the ARPA grant fund, we, I've got the exhibit on there showing the totals of the money, but we haven't.
All right, let, let's go to that. The reproductive equity fund logistical support, what does that specifically mean? What does that mean?
The million. That's in the text of the bill, let me pull this up there. So section one details the so this reproductive equity fund for the logistical support. So it specifically says that these, these grants will not be used to fund or assist abortion procedures, nor shall funds be used to encourage or counsel an individual to have an abortion. Grant funds will be used to provide access to abortion through logistical support, including but not limited to the funding of childcare, transportation, and other logistical support needs. The idea here is that we will use this the same as we've used other ARPA funding granting to outside organizations who are doing this work.
So the million dollars, you're talking about all of the, the high-risk pregnancies among minority women. But this million dollars will be used to provide transportation to get an abortion.
That's, yes, that's what this.
It seems a little, little odd that we're worried about people losing their babies and, and having difficult pregnancies, but we're putting the bulk of the money, well, a big chunk of the money in providing abortions. I just don't think that makes much sense.
I'd be happy to clarify.
You mentioned, wait a minute, I'm not finished. You mentioned trying to help this middle schooler. So I, I guess what I'm thinking is that if that middle school was, middle schooler that needed help was aborted, you, we wouldn't have that problem. Is that what you're saying? This just, it, it doesn't make sense to, to talk about providing health care for pregnant women and then we're going to provide them abortions if there's the problem, the pregnancy is too much of a problem.
That's what I'm. Would you like me to respond? I I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Would you like me to respond? Yes. Okay, great. So one of the things that I mentioned in my introduction was that we have found that being denied an abortion leads to negative pregnancy outcomes for the people who are pregnant, both in their, in the pregnancy that they are carrying and in future pregnancies. There are long-term studies that have been done to that effect. So this, this is a two-part reproductive equity fund so that we are handling both the folks with the immediate needs who cannot access health care in their home state, have to travel to go and get this health care, so their expenses are higher. And then also this five hundred thousand dollars to establish this fund that will help with throughout the doula process that would also in help out people who are dealing with pregnancy loss. And that is, that is an important piece of guiding people who are pregnant through their health care. And part of this is that, you know, we, we know that here in Missouri, anytime that we try to take action to support people in their reproductive health care choices, we get attacked by the state legislature. And we have this opportunity with this unrestricted money in a way that we don't normally get to be able to get this money out there to the people and organizations that need it immediately in a way that we may never have this chance again. So we're, we're taking every opportunity we can to care for the people of St. Louis. And that is, that is why there is, is so much money because it's going to be so expensive for the travel and the logistics to be able to get care that they need, that the cost is higher and that we, we've got one shot to really get this done.
Next question is for a million dollars, that's reproductive equity fund is to provide trans logistical support. How many people can we transport for that amount of money and provide support for?
It depends. It's really hard to pin down exactly how much that's going to be because the landscape has changed so much since the decision came down. Because, so we introduced this bill before the Supreme Court decision was issued. At the time, there was still access, there was still very limited access to abortion in Missouri. But there was, we didn't have the same multi-state crush onto Illinois. Um, but there was, we didn't have the same multi-state crush onto Illinois healthcare, um, healthcare facilities that we do right now. So since the decision has come down, like I mentioned again in the, in my introduction, calls for services at the neighboring clinics have risen 300%. And so we're looking at folks may have to travel further than just to Fairview Heights to get care. Um, so it's really hard to know what exactly those costs are going to be and what each individual's needs are going to be. Um, our goal is, uh, for these organizations who are providing support to meet people where they are and to help them access the care that they need.
So what happens when these funds run out?
We use the best of our ability. Um, it's the same with all of our ARPA funds. The money, the money is going to run out. Um, and we're in a, we're in a national healthcare crisis and we need, we need our state to do better and we need the federal government to do better.
Okay, so what is the reproductive equity fund, the $500,000? What does that pay for?
Yep. So those are two pieces of the same. So the reproductive equity fund is a sort of banner fund for these two different pieces. Um, and the second piece is $500,000. Um, allocations through this fund will support infrastructure and operations for organizations already providing direct services to support reproductive healthcare access in the region, including access to doulas and lactation support. Um, so this, we had come testify, um, Lakeisha, um, read it. She's a doula here in St. Louis. She works with the St. Louis Doula Project. And, and she and doulas like her have been working in the community. Um, and doulas are not often supported by insurance funds. Um, so this is one way that we can help support those efforts.
So why was the decision made to fund? I mean, it seems to me that taking care of a problem pregnancy would cost much more than transporting somebody uh, to Fairview Heights or further. Um, but we're, we're kind of short shrifting those people that, um, may have a problem pregnancy.
I don't, I don't think we're short shrifting, and these aren't just for problem pregnancies. These are for all pregnancies.
Right. So, I, to me, uh, if you have a pregnancy that's, that's problematic for whatever reason, because you have complicating health concerns, it seems like that would, would merit a little more money than those people um, wanting to eliminate their pregnancy.
It's possible. Um, but we're, we're trusting these community organizations that this is what, that, this is what the ask was, was for this $500,000 fund. Um, I would love to increase it. Um, Alderman Howard, if, if you want to help me work on that, we can increase the fund, um, that's going towards this, towards these doulas and towards folks who are supporting people in our community.
I could support this only if that's what you want, if that's what all this money would go for, is supporting those people that are having problematic pregnancies and, and issues delivering their children. I would support it, but I can't support this. Thank you very much. That's all.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. We will go to the Alderman from the 27th. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would the alderwoman from the eighth, uh, take a question, please?
Alderman from the eighth, will you yield to the Alderman from the 27th?
Yes.
Alderman, please proceed.
Thank you. Uh, Alderman, uh, my question is, where is the city counselor on this and, uh, if we anticipating being sued?
Sure. Um, we, we've worked with the city counselor, um, in carefully crafting the language that went into this bill. Um, you know, we, there are a lot of things that we do here in the city of St. Louis that threaten lawsuits, uh, by particularly this Attorney General. Um, whether it be the mask mandates that we put in place, um, whether it was raising the minimum wage. Um, and we, we have a city counselor that is ready to support this action and support us here in the city of St. Louis, doing everything that we can to help our constituents.
Okay, and then the other, other, it's not a, it's not a question, it's just a comment. And I think I've said this before because I continuously hear, uh, you are when you present bills. And it seems like, you know, you are the saviors for the African-American community. And so my question to you, is it any Hispanics or Caucasians that are dealing with this abortion situation, or is this African-Americans?
Uh, absolutely, Alderman Boyd. Um, all folks are impacted by this. Um, and I, I merely raised the specifics to black maternal mortality because those numbers are so drastic here in Missouri. Um, so we, we know that all people are, are needing access to this type of healthcare that are needing access to support, but we know that, um, black mothers, um, black birthing people here in Missouri, and particularly in St. Louis, are disproportionately impacted as we know that they're, they're disproportionately impacted in a number of areas. And so, um, I, I am not, this was not my idea. This was an idea that came forward from the community. Um, the work of Dr. Love Holtz, um, and the focus groups that she did, um, included lots of folks from lots of different perspectives, um, lots of different identities. So this is not, um, this is not an attempt to save. This is an opportunity to walk alongside our communities, our entire communities, um, as we're facing this healthcare crisis.
So I'm asking again, if any of you are would present, would you please not just specify as if the poor black people need you to save them? Because that's the message that you're portraying. And I'm just asking that you would please be respectful of the African-American community and make sure that it's not, it's across the board. It's not just one race of people that's having these issues.
Understood, Alderman. I apologize for, um, for highlighting only one group. It is, it is surely across the board that we need, we need the supports. Thank you for the correction.
You're welcome.
Anything further, Alderman?
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Uh, Alderman from the 13th, you are recognized.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, members of the board. I think the thing that's come up a few times, uh, is that the city would be sued for, for passing this. And I think it's important to highlight what it is that the city would be sued for, because there are, um, that, that is very important when we look at, at the bills and, and what the bill does in order to prevent that from happening. So the potential issue would be that government funds cannot be used to fund or assist abortion procedures or encourage or counsel an individual to have an abortion. Um, and that is what the concern would be if this bill did that, that the, that the city would be sued for doing that. Um, and I think it's very important to note that the language is especially in the bill, that these grants will not be used to fund or assist abortion procedures, nor shall funds be used to encourage or counsel an individual to have an abortion. What this bill does that I think is so important is that when choice has been taken away from so many people who can get pregnant, this bill allows that choice to be available. And I think that that is most important aspect, um, that is incredibly important to focus on. Not what the choice is, it's never been about, for me, what the choice is. It's about the choice exists and bodily autonomy is available. And for the city to be able to provide that and to support that through these funds, I think is so important. Um, we're not doing anything illegal in this bill. Nothing in this bill is against the law. So I think it should be put back on the Attorney General to, general to recognize that and to use restraint, uh, in his actions when a city is doing something that we have the autonomy, which is an important word to do, that we are doing it, and it's for the people who live here and who need healthcare. And if COVID has taught us anything, and it does all come back to COVID and how we are fighting this pandemic and, and serving the people of the city of St. Louis. If it's taught us anything, it's that, uh, health outcomes are, um, occur for so many different reasons. And as Alderman from the eighth pointed out, uh, this is one, uh, access to abortion, not even having the abortion or not having the abortion, but having the access to it can allow for much better health outcomes, which I think is the main thing we should be using COVID funds for. Um, so with that, I just want to re, uh, state that I am in full support of this bill. I am so grateful to all of the organizations that have worked on this, all of the aldermen who have worked on this, the mayor's office, all the discussions that have been had around this because it has made the bill better. Uh, and I appreciate the time, uh, on the floor today. I yield back.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. Uh, next, we have Alderman from the 28th, you're recognized.
Good morning, everybody. Uh, I am rising in support of the bill, but I really have just, just want to make a very quick legal point. Um, you know, people are saying, well, it's, it's illegal now, we might get sued. I just want to remind everybody that we have spent the last 30 years with Republicans passing laws that were illegal when they were passed and got sued. And that's how we got to this point. I mean, literally like Roe v. Wade got overturned because someone created a law that was illegal when it was filed, you know, but that, that everybody's seen. And, and it got, and you know, rose up to the Supreme Court and the Supreme Court said, well, we're gonna change the law. So it's not just, you know, I, I appreciated, um, I think it was the alderwoman from the sixth made the point about, you know, how we're responding in this moment. And yeah, I mean, I think it's our responsibility as the legis, the, the largest legislator, legislature in the state that has lawmaking powers that are in support of this, this, you know, uh, supportive reproductive rights and supportive abortion, that we do pass these laws to try to expand these rights, expecting that we were gonna get sued. Um, because that's the game. And, and you know, if, if you seriously just, just watched Republicans do what they did for the last couple decades and get the law changed by passing laws and, 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 and expanding, you know, um, their anti-choice, you know, laws in court. And your first kind of reaction is, well, this is illegal now. We can't do this because we might get sued. I really think you're, you're kind of misunderstanding, um, what just happened and, 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 and the process here. So um, I, I'll, my point is, and I understand there's people here that, that, that don't want city money to go through these things, and I'm not gonna, you know, argue with that. I do. I understand people don't. Um, but if your only point is that we shouldn't do this because we might get sued because it's now illegal under Roe v. Wade, I think that that is a really bad, bad reason not to support this bill. Thank you.
All right, Alderman, thank you. Alderman from the 15th, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, much of what I was going to say has been said already, so I won't belabor it. Um, but I do think that sometimes it is necessary to go to court. Um, and if we do think back to the minimum wage fight, um, the courts actually ruled that us in the city were within our legal rights at that time to raise the minimum wage. Um, we knew going into that fight that there were gonna be lawsuits, that we were going to be tested. Um, and, and we were, and we won in court. So I think that's important to recognize. I think we should also recognize that, quite frankly, Eric Schmidt has not had a very good track record of actually winning lawsuits. Um, and, you know, we were threatened with lawsuits over mask mandates and this body still came together and said, for the good of public health for our community, uh, we need to support these common sense, public health, um, you know, strategies, even though we had an Attorney General that was um, very much lined up to, to sue us on any kind of public health, uh, procedure that we put in place. I also think that we have to recognize that abortion is healthcare, period. Um, it is not up to us as a governing body to determine who is and who is not worthy of having an abortion. It is up to, uh, the person who is pregnant to make that decision with, um, with themselves and, and, you know, with the consult of, of medical professionals. Um, and by say, by putting people into groups about who is worthy of getting an abortion versus, you know, on, uh, you know, because of the type of pregnancy they have versus who, who isn't worthy is creating stigma. Um, and I think as a body, we need to be working to decrease stigma around abortion. Um, this is, I think, one of the most impactful things that we can do right now, knowing um, that we are in a state that has gone dark and knowing that, um, just because abortion is illegal in Missouri does not mean that abortions will stop. Um, what it means is that people need logistical support. They need lodging. They need childcare. They need all of these things to uh, support them in having the access, um, since they can't stay here locally anymore, uh, and, and get those services. Um, so I do rise in support of this. I, I commend the alderwoman from the eighth and the coalition of people and organizations that have put countless hours into working on this to ensure that it meets legal muster and we can get care to folks in our community who desperately need it now. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Um, being recognized for the first time still, Alderman from the 19th.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President and members of the board. Um, I don't want to do anything but just bring some clarity to some of the statements that have been made. First of all, the organizations, most of them that you're speaking of, have not been in existence long enough to have as much clarity as you are proposing. The health disparity study that was done by the board of aldermen, predominantly the black alderpersons, along and with partnership of VJC, is the health disparity study that most people are using in this, uh, metropolitan region. And we do know that as we continue to talk about helping black minorities, they are not at the top of the list of getting abortions. So, um, let's not continue to wave that flag so fervently for us. Also, I do want to say that we have begged for this bill to separate out that particular issue for funding so that it will be very clear about where we're going and most especially for all the other needs that our health department has, but so many other issues that are rising in concern in this community for healthcare. Uh, and that could have easily been done. We did not have had to spend this hour on going through this again. It was a very simple ask. It could have been done early on. And then to bring me an answer, oh, we have a severability clause. That also is a, a weak answer. Severability clauses also only do a minimal amount of separating the process and procedure of a bill. The bill can still be looked at as, in its entirety. And in a court system, you never know which way it's gonna go. So what I'm asking, and I am clarifying to the public that is listening, is the older persons who are bringing questioning and concern, they also had asked to separate this issue out, and it was ignored. I asked, it was ignored. It could have been a simple, easy thing for us to do. But because of the overall and overreaching need for our health issues for the total population, for so many different causes, not just this one that happens to be the hot, uh, topic button in the country. I'm gonna support this, but know that I'm gonna remember how you ignore simple requests that could have been handled a long time ago. It would not have had any ambiguity, because again, I don't like it when we pass bills that give people false expectations of what's gonna happen and may never damn it happen. So I thank you, uh, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. Uh, being recognized for the first time. Alderman from the third, you are next.
Uh, thank you. Would the alderwoman from the eighth yield for questioning?
Alderman from the eighth, will you yield the questions from the Alderman from the third?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Uh, first of all, good morning, Alderman. How are you today?
Morning. Doing well.
We're doing well. Um, a few quick questions. Uh, I absolutely, um, support uh, women's rights. I, I definitely don't agree with anyone infringing on them at all. And I do know that, uh, certain communities are impacted differently, but I know, you know, I know this is a, a, an issue that is, I think is impacting men at the same time, you know, because we, we also have to pay for some of those things. So, man, it takes two to make it happen. So, you know, those are decisions that adults make, or children, however it goes, that'll make collectively, and I think that affects both parties. Um, so I definitely don't think this is something that is like left field based on the environment and, uh, uh, climate that's going on here in the federal government right now. Most certainly understand, uh, the reaction time. If this was something that was happening, you know, five years from now, we wouldn't be looking at trying to come up with some type of way where we can help folks out who may be in a bind at this particular time and not knowing what the federal government, uh, was getting ready to impose on them. So I definitely understand the timing on it. You know, we have to be reactionary in what's going on because every day we're waking up, we got wars going on. We have no clue most of the time what we're gonna wake up to. Um, here in America or across, uh, you know, across seas. So, um, you know, with that being said, I do support that particular piece of the bill. The questions that I do have are more germane to the rest of it. Um, uh, while we are divvying out, uh, a million dollars to COVID. Uh, my first question would be, you know, it says that it's there for vaccinations, testing, and treatment. Could you give me an idea of what that looks like? What is vaccination for the health department and, and?
Absolutely. Um, so, so this funding is going to support our federally qualified healthcare centers. Absolutely. So so this funding is going to support our federally qualified healthcare centers. So Aphenia, I think Peoples, man, I'm blanking on the names of the clinics that have been doing the all of our, you know, the community-based outreach. So the folks that set up, you know, mobile testing units, those drive-through testing sites for folks that we're doing, you know, that are continuing to do vaccination and continuing to do treatment for folks. So there's like the the antiviral or the Paxlovid treatment that is available. The federally qualified healthcare centers, I believe, are giving that out as well to people who test or are able to prescribe that for treatment for people who are testing positive. So these are, there was funding that was coming directly from the feds to these federally qualified healthcare centers for them to run these operations. But that money has ended. And so we are using our ARPA money to supplement those efforts so that they can continue doing their outreach.
So how much is needed? So, okay, they're going to continue doing their outreach. How many exactly are we funding?
That's a good question. I don't know specifically how many centers this funds. It's 1.636 million is what the ask was. And I believe that's to fund them at least through this calendar year. You know, the ARPA funds expire, so this isn't like an unending amount of money. They're going to go through this money. And I don't, I I can look and see if, if I, yeah, I I can look and see if I can get that answer for you. But that's, the idea is to continue supporting those operations, at least through this calendar year.
Got you. So 1.6 million for the next one year. For and I'm not, I'm not saying I know, but I know you can get it. But for right now specifically, we don't know if we have five north, five south. And that's not really the the big bulk of it. I'm not going north and south with it. I'm just, I'm just using that as a reference so we can get to another point of the discussion. I know people need access to healthcare on both sides. And I know there's definitely a, something that the mayor's office has been working on and trying to be equitable across the city. So, you know, I'm not looking at it from that perspective, just trying to get some idea, you know, if it, you know, because because if it's saying they're doing testing, they'll be doing vaccinations and also treatments, you know. So if that, let's say for instance, Aphenia, that's in my ward, I do have Aphenia healthcare.
Yeah.
You know, I, some people get vaccinated, some don't. Some people get tested, some people don't, some people have treatment. So the idea is, right, is Aphenia getting 50,000 and then is everybody getting the exact same amount across the board? You know, is it, you know, 50,000 per ask? What do they ask for? Whatever it is that they that they like? How's this 1.6 million going directly to COVID in all of them? And I would say, just to be specific, so we don't have to hit the other three, let's just say for vaccinations per se, right? To go get vaccinated at Aphenia, you know, I'm not sure what the cost is, but we got 1.6 million allocated specifically for, let's not say the whole 1.6, but a portion of that. You know, how how is that broken up in a way where Aphenia says, hey, I've got, is it 50 people we vaccinated? And we ask for money from the city. You know, how how is that money supposed to be cut down by the organization?
It is, it's going to be allocated the same way as we've done with other ARPA money with a request for proposal. So the healthcare centers will come to the health department and say, here's, here's where, here's what we're going to do with each pocket of money that we're asking for. And then the health department awards those based on need and their qualifications to meet that request for proposal.
Well, that's, so I mean, all of them are already doing the same thing. So let's say all of them have sent in the same thing. We're going to treat it. Because if you look at the CDC's website, it has very specific things on there on how you treat it, deal with it. So they won't be doing anything outside of what the Center of Disease Control is recommending. So I think they all would kind of send in the same proposal, seeing as they already doing the work and they already have.
Yeah.
Federal funding.
Yeah, it might be different based on the populations that they serve, whether, you know, they're serving a higher number of people, whether they have multiple locations, that type of thing. So, I mean, this this federal money is extremely scrutinized. And our health director is committed to equity and has shown that since we, since we brought her on board, that she is is committed to making sure that the resources are getting into the communities that need it. And especially communities on the north side that that are are more, that are more at risk, I would say, of not being able to access the the same services. So I I just did a quick, just a quick Google search on the federally qualified. That is a mouthful that my tongue is just not doing today. Federally qualified healthcare centers in St. Louis, and you've got the family healthcare centers, you've got CHIPS. And it looks like the majority of those are situated in North St. Louis.
Yeah, it is. It is a bunch of them. And so that's, that's the reason I'm asking these questions. And we'll continue to go down the line. And just, just to be very, very clear, the reason that I'm asking this question is because I know some folks that may not be privy to a lot of this information, may not have this information. I just think that it's very important to know, you know, why I vote the way I'm going to vote. But also at the same time, you know, it's just, you know, it's just good to kind of break down where it is that we are and why specifically we're making the decisions that we're making. As far as the vaccinations, and that's the reason I was asking that, you know, there's a cost per vaccination. Then, you know, this makes some sort of sense to look at how many centers, if I got CHIPS in, I have Aphenia, they're both, you know, quarter mile from each other or half a mile from each other, you know. It's a, you know, are they both getting the same amount? Because I'm sure you you get that same thing sometimes with folks. They're like, well, why they get 20,000, I only got 10. So, you know, it's a, you know, just trying to get some understanding on what those numbers look like. Therefore, specifically, you know, we'll have, you know, a record of, hey, you know, they have 50 people that they serve, and you only serve 20, right? So, you know, with that being said, it's just good to have a good idea of why things are the way they are, number one. Number two, what is treatment particularly? Do we have some idea of what that is?
Yeah. So like I was saying, there, we have treatments for COVID-19 that are indicated for people with health complications and and higher risk. So like the Paxlovid is one of the the pills that you can get. So like, if you get the flu and you go and you can get, you test positive for the flu, they can prescribe you a medication that is going to lessen the effects of the flu. It's kind of the same deal for COVID-19. And it's been out for, I mean, lots of months now, probably nearing a year. And that's one of those, that's one of those things that can be made available to people who are in high-risk categories.
Right, right. So it's just, it's three of them. So come on, if you go to like, so so everybody's familiar with the dot gov websites. We know that, you know, you can't get a dot gov unless you are some sort of a government entity. That is a very official extension. So on the CDC's website, it gives a lot of information on COVID, you know, how it's treated. Also, there is a government website by the name of vaccines.gov. If anybody gets a chance to go to it, I'll post it here in the chat. Looks like that's not working for me. So it gives out a lot of information, particularly on where you can go to get vaccines and treatment. Same thing with the CDC's website I posted on the tube. So it's, you know, it's, we're kind of getting to that point where, you know, with COVID in particular, I I think it needs to be a separate issue. And reason being is because there's so many different entities out there that are, every other day I got folks trying to set up a testing site. Somebody's paying for that. So, you know, for testing is free. Like you can actually get tests sent to your house right now for free and send it back out and get your results in in like, like, you know, you have to send it out. You get them in like 10 minutes. You can go to urgent care if you don't have a insurance card and get it for free on the vaccination.gov website there that I just posted in the chat. That's an official website. I've sent folks from my community, you know, there to utilize it, utilizing that that 1-800-1-866-1877. But it's, it says, you know, right there that it's it's completely free. Vaccinations are free. For for every single person in the entire United States, regardless of how much money you make or what color you are, we all are available to get a vaccination for free. So, you know, with us spending 1.6 million, period, unless, you know, once again, if we need to calculate what the vaccination part of this is and remove it, there's no reason for us to be giving money out. My community is, I mean, we murdering each other every day. I mean, it's nuts outside. I mean, it really, really is. These folks ain't going to get no vaccination. And I mean, seriously, like, they are not tripping off dodging Corona. We dodging bullets every day. Folks would rather deal with Corona than deal with these gunshots. So, you know, when it comes down to just a little bit of money, just anything we can kind of take and say, maybe we can spend this in a different way, right? If vaccinations account for 600,000 of that, let's give that to some single mothers who can't afford right now to get temp tags. I mean, taking their temp tags into regular place because they out here just running from the police, trying to get from point A to point B and get a job. Like it's simple things like that that take, when the coronavirus is over, right? When this money runs out, because this is one year. Because once it's over, it's over. Five years from now, the coronavirus, they say, they saying it's never going away. We got like, what, 10 variants at this point? It's going to continue to transform. And who knows how many federal dollars will continue to stack up. But we do know what we have right now is enough to do some of the things that you were talking about because it's important to take care of this abortion problem. Without a doubt, that is important because that is an issue right now that nobody could have contemplated. Nobody woke up last year and was like, next year, I may not be able to get an abortion. I may not be able to deal with the complications of thinking about that. If I become pregnant before it is, I'm ready. So that's 100, the effort is all the way there. I agree with that 1,000%, right? And my apologies for not seeing that COVID piece. I did talk to a few folks about this. And I was, I didn't know that there was a COVID piece involved in this. But I am, like, I read a lot about COVID stuff. I mean, it's the stuff is interesting, but not to, not to say you don't. I'm just saying that it's super free right now. I mean, anybody.
Can I clarify, Alderman? Yeah. So these federally qualified healthcare centers, they have patients. So they have patients who are tied directly to their healthcare centers. Their doctors, their physicians are at these healthcare centers. So these are the main folks that these go to, that people go to for care. It's not like a, it can sometimes function in the same way as sort of an urgent care. But it, there, there are physicians at these healthcare centers who care for the people. And these federally qualified healthcare centers lost their funding for COVID-related activities. So when you're looking at the vaccine website and the vaccine website is saying you should be able to get this vaccine for free, you still have to find a location to do that. And so what we're trying to do is give this money to these federally qualified healthcare centers so that their patients can continue receiving care at their location. Do you know what I'm saying? So we're not, we're not trying to set up new testing sites because you're right, testing is more available now than it was before. It's still expensive. I mean, I I'm recovering from COVID and we had to go out and buy a whole bunch more tests. We got all the free ones from the mail. We've burned through those because COVID is still around us and we still need to be testing and that. So but what we're trying to do is get this money back to these, these federal healthcare centers so that they can continue providing the care that they need. And that involves a vaccination piece because we've just opened up a new category for vaccinations, right? So the six months to to five-year-old kids are now eligible for vaccines. So those, those kids now need to be able to access that same care that their parents were, that may be visiting those healthcare centers as patients. So that's where that connection is, is that we're using this ARPA money specifically because it's tied to COVID. So we're using it to continue supporting COVID efforts. And that includes the vaccination so that we aren't continuing to see people getting seriously ill. Does that help?
Well, it it does to some degree. And and once again, what you, what you said earlier was very, very true that most of those sites that you looked at are on north. It's the reason why we not getting vaccinated. It's the reason why it's not happening in high numbers. Like there, there is a reason for that. You know, so I want to be very clear. People are waking up in the morning. They said that we was going to get it the worst out of everybody. We supposed to be dead. Whole, whole lot of black folks was, I, I, we was supposed to deteriorate here, and they did not. So, you know, I just want to be, like, if you talk to 90% of the community, if you can, if you, we just took the time to just knock these doors and ask them whether, whether or not they would rather COVID funds than something dealing with home improvement or giving these kids something to do during the day. Like, I know we got the violence prevention. That's dope. That's, you know, one, one very big step forward and and giving folks more of what it is that they need in the community. But I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying, just being realistic.
Sure. Well, and that's, that's why.
Has been out here.
This is, this is such a small piece of that 500 million. This is 1.6 million, right? So this is not just a piece to be able to continue the preventative healthcare efforts so that we don't continue seeing people missing work, losing their jobs, potentially losing their homes when they do get sick. So, I mean, it took me two and a half years to finally get sick, right? And like, thank goodness I had the vaccines, so I was able to move through this fairly easily. It still sucked. I would not recommend it. Please try to continue avoiding getting COVID. But, but we're, we, you know, we allocated 15 million towards home repair. We've allocated millions, hundreds of millions of dollars towards, towards these programs that you're talking about that I think are incredibly valuable and we absolutely should keep looking at that. But this, this key 1.636 million is to support these federal facilities that really need this money. We need to fill in the gap where Congress has stalled. We need to fill in that gap for these community healthcare centers.
I understand. Is there any way, and I just got to ask to be amenable, like, is it just, is, is there any way we could like, why are we mixing this with abortion? You know, like, this is like a, like that, the women's issue, that's, that's a, I mean, I'm an abortion issue. That's like a, that's so different from COVID. It hits different. You know, it's a totally different feeling than thinking about COVID. Like that, we talking about babies. We're talking about.
I mean, I understand.
Then feeling.
Yeah.
You know, so it's like.
I understand that they feel different. But we're working to grant money, you know, we're working with a specific pot of money that we're specifically granting to the health department to do these, to do these programs. So we've, we've got multiple programs that we're asking the health department to implement. And this is how we've done these ARPA bills, right? We've categorized things together with the departments that they're going through, and we've moved them together. And when we, when we started working on the funding for the abortion logistics support and the maternal healthcare support, the health department said, hey, we really need this money now. Can you please put this in here so that we make sure that this money gets done, gets out to the community that needs it? So it's a, it's an urgency of timing that comes with both pieces. And it's using the same money, going to the same department. And that's why they're paired together because they're both vitally important to the healthcare of our community, and they're both needed at this moment in time.
So I appreciate that. I will say this. I, I, I can't support the bill in its current form. If you put that 1.6 million in there with the abortion, I'm on the way with it. Hell, we could, we could go out and buy 1.6 million worth of Plan Bs at this point, you know, and just tell everybody that. I mean, because that's, 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 that's like what's needed. Plan Bs going to go through the roof, right? Free abortion, like, that's something nobody can say nothing about. Hey, we got them on deck, but don't come back more than three times. You know, or some, whatever it is that we can do, you know. But it's, it's like with COVID, everything is just so free and it's, it's just, it really is readily available in so many different capacities. Yeah, you do have to call around and look for certain facilities now because it's just not as much funding as it was initially. So, you know, like you said, some of these organizations won't be able to continue their COVID program. They'll be able to continue their regular order of business pre-COVID. But at some point in time, COVID is going to be over. We still going to have this issue that we talking about right now. And folks who don't have access to the Plan B because it went up $30, because it's all, it's getting, it's private equity firm that owns it, unfortunately. They got smart in 2017 and bought it out. But either way, you know, I think that's maybe the next pressing thing, which is why we're talking about it now. At some point in time, like you getting over COVID, we all will be getting over this, this, uh, this micro beast and hopefully becoming immune to it. And, you know, these will be the countries that are standing. So I will say I support the first half of it without a doubt. But I, I cannot support the COVID piece because I, I, I think we could spend that money in so many more different ways. You know, especially with the nature of what's going on. If we, you know, talk about reproductive health service or reproductive services in general, I think that should just be one topic. So, but I do appreciate the efforts.
Thank you.
Anything else, Alderman?
No, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Alderman 2030 is up, but is there anyone who would like to be heard for the first time? Anyone else who'd like to be heard for the first time? Oh, seeing no hands raised. Alderman Bacaro, you're allowed to speak for the second time.
Yeah, I just want to address a couple of things that came up. Minimum wage. I very much lived through minimum wage. I was chairing that committee. We were warned, not only about lawsuits, but from the state. At the time, they said, look, everybody said $11. That's it. If you go 11, we're not going to do anything. The Board of Alderman, the headline, the Carol kills minimum wage. No, that's untrue. The Alderman that voted it killed minimum wage. Because not only did the state, yeah, we won our lawsuit. Because not only did the state, yeah, we won our lawsuit and we had minimum wage of fifteen dollars for a week. The state instantly stepped in and not only can we not now even go to eleven dollars, they made a, a, a law now that no community across the whole state of Missouri can go higher than the state minimum wage. And we were warned and told. So when you bring up minimum wage, yeah, we shook our finger and said, we'll show you, we're going to show you. Jeff City showed us, we are nothing, you know? We did, yeah, we shook our finger and we've now cost a lot of people. We could have went to eleven dollars and that's what they said, eleven. You go eleven and then it would have been there and we could have worked up from there. And I thought that would be reasonable and good, but we decided we're going to show them and they showed us. This is not about pro-life, pro-choice abortions. We're going to tie up that COVID money in court along with this because it's going to be sued all on the same thing. And that lawsuit isn't going to be for a week or two weeks. It's going to go for quite a long while. During that year or two years or however long it's in court, you know, it, it, it's going to tie up that money. We're not helping anyone. We're, 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 you know, this is a, one of those, gee, you know, I support women's rights and I do. But this is one of those that will get us sued. It will tie up the money. It will tie up the COVID money that we've all said is so important, but that's going to tie up that testing along with this. These should have been separate. You know, but I did want to correct the minimum wage. We all talked about how we led on minimum wage. We didn't lead. We killed minimum wage for the whole state of Missouri. Cause Jeff City quickly stepped in and I would not doubt that Jeff City won, was, that I would not doubt that they will step in on this, create some sort of ordinance or state law. They could even potentially take our money away or take our ability to spend that money. I know, I'm just projecting that doing these kinds of things where we shake our finger at the state and say, we're not gonna do. And, and, and again, when you kept bringing up minimum wage, saying, look, we showed them and we did win. Yeah, we won for a week. So for one week, minimum wage went to fifteen dollars and the next week, they got taken all the way down to like seven dollars or eight dollars. Well, we could have did the right thing in the first place. So, I, you know, I, I just for all the younger alders or newer alders that weren't around for that. That, that's kind of, you know, when you bring up the minimum wage, we shake our finger at the state and the state will basically come back with their fist. And, and I would love to have seen minimum wage go up. And I, I think we should have worked within what the state wanted. But instead we chose to pass something that the state wanted. If we did, this is what's going to happen. But I just wanted to correct the minimum wage and also say, we're now going to be tying up the COVID money that is desperately needed for COVID testing, you know, uh, while this is all in court. And I, I get the severability clause. Anyway, that, that, I just wanted to correct the minimum wage story because when they, when, when, I forget who was saying, we went to court and we beat them on minimum wage. We didn't win. You know, so tying this, tying this three or four million dollars up, the COVID testing money up, to me is just a very bad idea, you know? Uh, just, I just want to get that out there. This thing has become now about abortions and everything else when it really isn't. And for me, this is about taking a bunch of money that's going to be in a larger pot that shouldn't be all thrown in this larger pot with the threat and more than a threat. That there's going to be a lawsuit and more than the like likelihood that something will get introduced in Jeff City that could even start to limit us on how we spend money. And I'm just saying, uh, and I'll leave it at that. I'm just gonna, you know, I can't support it in its present, in its present form. But I'll leave it at that. I just caution that if we pass this, then, you know, that I don't, I, I think we're doing more harm than good because we're tying up a bunch of money that could be used to help people and, and we're going to be tying that money up for, even if it's only for a year. The courts are tied up. So for the next year or two years, we're going to tie up four million dollars. We're going to tie up COVID funds. You know, I, I just don't see this as, as, as a good idea. I'll leave it at that. Thank you and I'll yield back.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. We have a new hand up. Alderman from the twenty-sixth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President and, um, members of the board. I'm going to be very brief because so many things have already been said that I would have definitely stated and of course said that I would have never seen. Uh, but I do want to say that COVID nineteen pandemic absolutely disproportionately impacted our community's access to healthcare. And as a black woman and as a mother and in a position to be able to vote for this, my vote is a loud eye on this. I think that the threat is bigger if we don't do anything. The threat is bigger if we don't say nothing. The threat is bigger if we don't advocate for all of the entities and all of our constituencies and all of the people that are listening. I can hear the voices that we, um, want to stand and continue to stand with them in this, in this fight that's been going on before the pandemic, right? As many of these things that we fight for down here, the pandemic just ripped the Band-Aid off the work that we were all already trying to do. So again, I just wanted to chime in really quick in rising support of Board Bill sixty, wanted to thank the sponsors, the work, the, the, the advocates, um, the administrations, the people that were all on board, were getting this, this forum. And know that again, that the fear, this kind of work can't be stopped by fears and can't be stopped by, um, thinking that something might happen. I feel again that the threat is bigger if we don't do anything. So thank you for letting me, um, rise again in support of this and I, I'm looking forward to voting out.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. And for the second time, Alderman from the nineteenth, we're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I did, um, probably come on a little bit too strong, but it's imperative that you think the right way. You see, you can't tell me that you care so much about healthcare access when you are jeopardizing the opportunity for those additional COVID funds to move forward swiftly. Because we do know that our state of Missouri, our attorney general already has his bill ready to go, his, he's going to court. His lawsuit is going to court against us, which will hold up the opportunity for all other things to take place. Because again, us having a severability clause in there means nothing because it's still, they will look at the entire bill. We don't know when it will be heard. He's going to ask for the cease and desist immediately. Again, you are jeopardizing all other funds, which is why I am so amazed that this was not separated out. Uh, and I also wanted to also remind everybody that, yeah, we're going to vote for it because they put it out there as, as a political part of everything that is going on, on the state level as well as the local level. So we're playing politics with people's lives as we play politics with people's quality of life every day in this region. And I'm sick and tired of it. The health disparity study that was done, all our federally qualified clinics were a part of it as well as the Washington University folks, BJC, BJH and others, along with a lot of our long-term medical doctors out of the black community were a part of the study. So maybe you need to go read something sometime and learn about what you're talking about instead of the new, uh, rhetoric that you have created on behalf of what you're trying to do. Cause see, at the end of that study, there was a plan put in place. The plan is being implemented every day in these communities and you're not a part of it because I've never seen any of you anywhere in these communities doing anything. But I have seen many of the folks from these clinics involved. And so along with that, they've also brought in other health providers. And the coalition is working with COVID. It includes Mercy, St. Luke's, SSM, SLU, BJC and BJH. They're, they're doing great things along with the clinics. So again, you need to go read and understand where we are, know what the plan was that was proposed and understand where the plan is now in implementation. And also know the other dollars that are being put into this community to support the needs of healthcare for all people, not just minorities. Uh, but again, I, I go along with having a roll call vote. As I said, you've put a lot of people in a predicament. They're going to have to vote for this, but you should have been courteous to the people of the city of St. Louis and separated this out so that it could have been dealt with differently. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Alderman. Seeing no other hands raised, Alderman from the eighth, you're recognized. Close.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, I appreciate the, uh, detailed conversation this morning about the needs that we face, um, in our community and our desire as the city of St. Louis as the representatives of the people of the city of St. Louis, um, to fight, to fight for our residents, um, and their healthcare access. Um, and to make sure that, that we're, we're not going quietly here, um, that we, uh, we respect the rights of our citizens here in the city of St. Louis and we're going to do everything within our power, um, to make sure that they have the healthcare access that they need. Um, I don't like to tell other attorneys how to do their job, um, but a skilled attorney general, uh, who really cares about the welfare and the wellbeing of his constituents here in the state of Missouri would only sue to block the, um, portions of this bill that he disagrees with. Um, and I'm still confident that we would win that fight, um, because of the way that this bill is structured and the way that the funding is, is given to our city to spend, um, uh, with the, with the ability that we have, uh, to make those decisions for our citizens. So, um, with all of that being said, I thank you all, uh, for your support and I, uh, ask for your favorable consideration of Board Bill sixty-one.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. There has been a request for roll call. Um, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley.
Nope.
Alderman Evans. Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderman Iglesias.
Aye.
Alderman Carter. Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
No.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Yes.
Alderman Peel. Alderman Ty.
Aye.
Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Bacaro.
Take me a second. No.
Alderman Ryan.
Aye.
Alderman Cole.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
No.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
President Ballmer.
No.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook.
No.
Alderman Evans.
No.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Nope.
Alderman Davis.
Present.
Fifteen I votes. Eight no votes and one voted present.
All right. Thank you, Sharita. By your vote, you passed the motion of the Alderman from the eighth to, do our Bill sixty-one committee substitute.
Board Bill sixty-three, I'm sorry.
Please proceed.
Board Bill sixty-three sponsored by Alderman Bosley and ordinance to repeal ordinance six eight seven zero six relating to the appointment and rates of compensation of certain employees of the licensed collector of the city of St. Louis. And in acting in lieu thereof, a new ordinance dealing with the same subject matter and containing an emergency clause.
All right. Thank you very much. Alderman from the third, you're recognized on a perfection of Board Bill sixty-three.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we perfect Board Bill sixty-three.
Can I take a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Okay. The first one I heard was Alderman from the twenty-third. So it's been moved by Alderman from the third and seconded by Alderman from the twenty-third. Alderman, please proceed.
I have an amendment to this board bill. Is this the proper time to introduce that?
Okay. Is the amendment in the drive before all of us?
Yes, sir. It should be.
Okay. Does everyone have the amendment? Okay. All right. With that, you can proceed with your amendment, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is Board Bill sixty-three. Um, this is a violence prevention bill. There were a few things that need to be amended within the bill. Um, the first few lines that needed to be amended was the first thing where the health department, this was going, the funds were supposed to be allocated to the health department and the health department was supposed to disperse them. But, um, they have been, uh, crossed out and it's supposed to be going to the public safety director. That was an oversight. Um, so, uh, in the floor substitute there, I'm, I'm sorry, this is, I need to renew my, the motion for, it's supposed to be a floor substitute, not a.
I thought that was, uh, sixty-five was the floor substitute, sir. You have amendment for sixty.
You're right. My apologies.
Okay. Please proceed then. Describe your amendment and then we, you need to read the amendment, sir.
Okay. My apologies. Can we have a, uh, the clerk read the amendment, please?
Give me just a second.
Madam Clerk, let me give her a moment to pull it up.
My apologies. You know, I've been running them back and forth. So I got sixty-two to sixty-five a little mixed up.
No problem, sir. No problem.
Amendment number one to Board Bill sixty-three, the amended board bill, page one nine six, beginning on page one, line, line six, follow, where, strike out the words, six eight seven zero six and insert in lieu thereof and read into the word, read in words and figures as follows, seven one five one four.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, so basically we had a, uh, a issue there when we first put this bill in, uh, with the ordinance number. So we passed one, didn't have the ordinance number correct. Well, not, we had it correct, but it had not been passed. Um, I'm going to research it correctly. It was not passed before we passed the second board bill or amended it. So going back and just putting the ordinance number in the correct way.
Okay. All right. Uh, is there any discussion in regard to amendment one to Board Bill sixty-three? Any discussion? I see no hands raised. Uh, with that, Alderman from the third, if you'd like to make a motion to adopt your amendment number one?
Yes, sir. I move that we adopt amendment number one.
Case been moved by Alderman from the third, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-sixth that we adopt amendment number one to Board Bill sixty-three. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. All right. We are now discussing Board Bill sixty-three as amended. Please proceed, Mr. Mr. Alderman.
All right. Thank you. Once again, this is, uh, Board Bill sixty-three as amended. Uh, we've.
Please make a motion to, uh, to.
Oh, my apologies. I move that
We adopt?
We adopt Board Bill 63 as amended.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderman from the 3rd and seconded by Alderman from the 14th that we adopt Board Bill 63 as amended. Now, please proceed, Alderman, with your discussion.
All right, thank you once again. This is Board Bill 63 as amended. As you know, we went through a bunch of these different board bills trying to make sure that everybody had what it is they needed to be able to get pay raises and get the bonus that was required, not required, that the mayor's office is helping everybody out through these ARPA funds and the Board of Alderman approved through the different committee hearings that we had. So this is just a simple change, ensuring that the ordinance number matches up and this will be a legal board bill once we get it to the point where it's passed by the mayor's office. So with that, I ask for your favorable consideration on Board Bill 63 as amended and I renew my motion.
All right, thank you, sir. We do have a hand up, Alderman from the 18th. Alderman from the 18th, you are muted currently.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Board. This is germane, I hope. I'm saying that, going to say that I'm not in favor of this bill. And again, the reasons, there are several reasons. My constituents should be given pride and their pride is as follows, and they haven't been acted upon. And I don't, I cannot go along with a bonus because we had, for example, I can just go to the refuge department, I have all this dumping in the, especially north of there, north and south of there, Mark. Dumpsters turn over, damaged, overfilled. This public, uh, Public Safety Department gets almost half of the budget. But I still have people not stopping their stop signs, which is against the law. And the street department, before COVID-19, I had asked for stop signs in Central West End that's north, south of there, Mark. Two stop signs, they constantly running them. That was, I still haven't got them. Then in the north of there, I asked for some, no big trucks and stuff running, uh, being parked over a long period of time. Before COVID, still haven't got them. So the other one is Forest Street. I went and picketed the second, two months after I became Alderman, because the grass was tall, it wasn't cut proper, and they didn't clean up. That was before COVID, it still hasn't been done. Parts, I have people going to the restroom outside. I have a big, brand-new, looking like a very nice-looking building, but no toilets or services. So people are going into buildings, using the restroom. They sometime have to, kids have to use it during emergency in the, in the parks. And some, even some parents, um, the person could not have very good bladder control or whatever. So, and then the same thing, I went out to, I refuse, two people, four people were sitting there. And I, and I asked them, where, why y'all sitting there, you just got a bonus? Well, no trucks, but we end up just paying them, the truck down to $17 an hour. The person who's supposed to keep the trucks running farted out, well, much more, I'm not sure the exact numbers. I don't want to exaggerate, but much more, don't have the trucks running. Here we have a yard waste group. I don't know what they do, but my constituents wanted, wanted their trash picked up. And the, and people we were giving bonuses through no fault of their own were sitting there in the, in the waiting area because they had no trucks. Uh, so, uh, I, on the note, and then we have built, um, buildings that could easily be closed because people have been working from home. We have plenty of money. I can't vote for waste. I can't vote for, uh, giving bonuses to people who can't do, either won't do the job or can't do the job. So I want to make very clear, I go on record against any bonus or any raise to everybody. I think some people deserve a bonus, but that should be special. But the pro, my priority, I've never heard, but a couple of people asked for, asked me to, for a raise, and there were city workers who got on me, one or two of them. But my constituents have never asked me to give the city employees a raise. So I'm sticking with my constituents and I go on record to not give a raise, not give a bonus until the city workers and myself also, who is paid by taxpayer dollars, stand up for keeping our whole city, looking at prioritizing our cities. I will finish with this. Everybody need money. The people who commit crime for money need money, that's why they do it. Uh, the, uh, people who are homeless need money more than the city workers need it. Uh, and I, they need it more than I need it. Uh, so when we talk about we need a raise, we're not the only ones who need money. Let's, let's start with the least of these first. And then go from, from the bottom, from those with nothing to, to those of us who have something. And that's my, and I hear back to Mr. President and thank you, Board.
All right, thank, thank you, Alderman, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Alderman from the 24th, you have your hand up.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Just real quick, want to jump in. I again respectfully disagree with my colleague from the 18th. I think that the, the city workers that we have are doing the best with what they've got. They've been having to work with reduced resources for two years. And a 3% raise, when we're at a time of 8% inflation, turns into a 5% pay cut for most city employees to still stay on the books and work with us when a lot of them could take their talents into the private sector and be making more money. Uh, so I think it's just important to note that, you know, it, it's, it's not on these individual workers for why some things are falling behind. It's an overall labor shortage. The folks that are here working for the city are doing the best they can and they're just getting their butts kicked right now. And so I just want to let them know that, that I'm supportive of their efforts and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the 23rd, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, just, I agree, a 3% raise and a larger than a 3% increase in the health insurance cost. Even at that, even if you don't account for inflation, was a net negative gain for city employees. They rate, they gave them a 3% raise, but also raised the cost of their health insurance. So it was actually a, a negative gains, not even, not even including, like Alderman Ryan said, not even including the difference in the inflation versus the 3%. You know, it's also the, the, the insurance, but I just wanted to throw that in, I just wanted to mention that.
All right, thank you, sir. Very much. Any others further discussion? I see no hands raised. Alderman the 3rd, you're recognized to close. Are you muted? You're muted, sir.
Thank you, sir. Once again, I concur. Our, our city workers are working very, very hard. Things are very difficult, I think, for everybody right now with the shortages that are going on and the different challenges that come with trying to hire folks. So we're doing nothing but trying to ensure that we have a competitive city when it comes down to ensuring that our workers feel like they have competitive pay and are being treated in an environment that makes them want to stay here for the long haul and possibly look at the city as being a career. So with that, I renew my motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alderman, you guys here have your hand raised, but we have already moved to close.
Okay. Can we have roll call?
You can request a roll call, sir, yes. All right. So it's been moved, the segment for perfect Board Bill 63 as amended. So Sharita, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus? Alderman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderman Evans? Alderman Page?
Aye.
Alderman Iggracia?
Aye.
Alderman Calder? Alderman Rice?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Stevens?
Aye.
Alderman Switzer?
Aye.
Alderman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg? Alderman Peel? Alderman Ty?
No.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Oh, it's, yeah. Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro?
Aye.
Alderman Ryan?
Aye.
Alderman Con?
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Grass? President Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderman Tyus? Alderman Evans? Alderman Calder? Alderman Oldenburg? Alderman Grass?
Aye.
Twenty I votes and one no vote.
Thank you, Sharita. By your vote, you've sustained the motion of the Alderman from the 3rd and passed and perfected Board Bill 65, three as amended. Board Bills for Perfection. Continue, six.
Board Bill 65 as amended sponsored by Alderman Bosley and Alderman Gunther. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement appropriate an apportion of funds received under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 authorizing contracts to expand the funds to extend to the extent received, contain the severability clause and an emergency clause.
All right, Alderman from the 3rd, you're recognized on Board Bill 65 as amended.
All right, thank you very much. I move
Oh, you're muted, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I move that we perfect Board Bill 65.
As amended.
As amended?
Yes.
As I, I move that we protect Board Bill 65 as amended.
Sex.
Okay, it's been moved by the Alderman from the 3rd, seconded by the Alderman from the 27th. We have a motion second, please proceed, Alderman.
All right, thank you for this board bill in particular. We have floor substitute four.
Substituting the drive when they're in front of everyone?
Yes, sir.
All right, everyone have that? Seeing no hands, please proceed, sir.
All right, thank you. Once again, this board bill is a violence prevention board bill. It's $10 million going to what we have not spent money on in particular within the city. I know we spent money on programs like Cure Violence, uh, different initiatives that we see working to some degree in other neighborhoods with folks that are from the neighborhoods supposed to be kind of bringing crime down in a different capacity with that particular program. What this program aims to do is help those grassroots individuals, those individuals who have summer camps. Like right now, we have a lot of individuals who are working in neighborhood capacity that know the neighborhood, children like Ms. Velma Bailey, uh, one amazing camp here in the ward, Camp Sunsplash, right at Natural Bridge and Grand, right at Fairgrounds Park, one of the most dangerous intersections in the entire nation. And we have one of the residents here who are taking all the children every single day and having a camp out there at her own expense. She's doing everything she can to bring a great time to those children out there who can't afford places like Hoover, aren't able to get in because of capacity or unable to get up to Matthews Dickies and other places like that, potentially based on a lot of different obstacles. But right there at Fairgrounds Park, there's at least 30 to 40 children there every single day enjoying themselves, utilizing Fairgrounds Park right next to that pool where there isn't any funding, where she is working very, very diligently with those children who grow up in this community and eventually be those individuals. So we're looking at, um, who could potentially be the shooters or the people that were trying to stop from committing crimes or the parents of those individuals who may be, um, you know, I, I, one of the most crime-ridden wards in the city of St. Louis. And it's, you know, it's, it's, it's no secret, one of the most dangerous wards at the same time. So you have individuals who are working with the children of these, uh, you know, some of these parents. These parents respect the individuals who are out here doing the work. And last thing, that's why you don't hear no shootings going on in Fairgrounds Park right now. There hasn't been any homicides in Fairgrounds Park in about four years. That's not just because people woke up and said, we don't want to shoot in Fairgrounds. It's because people's children are there and they know that you have people there who are working in the community every day and nine times out of 10, you're going to hurt somebody that you know. And, and, you know, that's, that's, when you have grassroots organizations that really have the ability to control the narrative and what's going on in our communities, those are the ones that really have the ability to affect, uh, change. And that's what these dollars are supposed to help go to individuals that are doing work like that. And it's just not about summer camps. You have places like Play School where we have, uh, multiple different organizations on the inside that are nonprofits doing what it is they need for teen mothers, giving daycare. I'm sorry, I'm having a brain fart with her name, but Ms. Taniki Berry, Taniki Steele. She's taking our children, teaching them a lot of things during the daytime, after-school programs. Of course, you all know that idle time is the devil's workshop. So we have a lot of children, as soon as they get out of school, we don't have anything to do in our communities. Um, and people go out and they find a million other things to get into. And that's what these dollars hope to address in those organizations. Once again, like Dream Builders who are out here in our communities with hundreds of kids, teaching them how to build the community up. We got broken windows all over the community and they're learning how to fix those broken windows. They're learning how to look at these broken doors that are broken down and opposed to us calling the city. They're learning how to fix these, uh, doors. And I just see broken, fallen-down buildings. They're seeing themselves inside of these houses with the ability to fix those things up. And it's organizations like that who we are trying to find, who actually will prevent violence from happening and not just address it when we call 911 and try to figure out why there's an issue at the house. But we all know what's going on in our city. A whole of all of us live in these communities on a regular, growing up here. So we know the type of things that if addressed could be preventative in keeping some young man from waking up tomorrow and thinking the best way to eat is to rob somebody. From waking up tomorrow and thinking the best way to get a nice car is to rob somebody who got it because you don't foresee yourself being able to afford it. So all these different things come down to funding. And you can't change a person's mind without having a different message and without showing them something different. And to do those different things in our communities where people have been, uh, forgotten, left out and just underfunded. This is a time where we do have funding, where the taxpayers aren't shelling out. There are money specifically from communities who have, uh, been able to build themselves up over the last few decades. But this is federal funding that is allotted for communities that are stricken with violence and have been stricken with violence because of COVID and will continue to be based on, uh, you know, that rippling effect. So with that being said, uh, the amendments themselves within this bill, they take the money allocated to the Health Department to render these services and give them to
One second, you're speaking to floor substitute to this motion. Well, before we can go a little further, will you need to actually make a motion to, we adopt your floor substitute 65? And I need a second on that.
I'll second that.
Okay, so please make a motion to adopt 65 floor substitute.
I, I move that we adopt, uh, floor substitutes. I mean, I, I, I move that we adopt Board Bill 65 for substitute, floor substitute for 65.
Thank you, sir.
And I'll second that.
And we have, thank you very much, guys. Go by procedure here. So we have a motion for Board Bill 65 for substitute from Alderman the 3rd, segment Alderman the 23rd. You can continue your discussion. If you're, we do have a hand or so up, if you'd like to listen or do anything else, or let me know.
Yes, sir, we, we can take as many questions as we need.
All right, okay. Alderman from the 14th, Alderman from the 14th, you're recognized. Please unmute yourself, ma'am.
Mr. President, would the Alderman from the 3rd yield for questions?
Alderman from the 3rd, you yield the questions from the Alderman from the 14th.
Absolutely.
Alderman Bosley, these funds would be expended throughout the city, not in just any particular area to prevent violence and, uh, as, as discretion of the Department of Public Safety?
Yes.
Okay. So it won't just include things for children, it'll include things for young adults or wherever the need is based. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Any other hands? Any other hands? I see no other hands on that. You're recognized to close, Alderman. Please proceed.
All right, thank you. Once again, you all. All right, thank you. Once again, you all, you all know what type of work we're all doing. We are trying to figure out the magic keys to trying to turn our city down because it's turned up all the way. So um, with that, uh, we're asking for this ten million dollars to go to where it is that we are trying to figure out. One of the most important questions to the city is how we reduce our violence and actually be able to look at it and analytically, uh, measure it and where it is that we go from here. So I ask for your favorable consideration uh, on this board bill and, uh, renew my motion.
Thank you very much, sir. It's been moved and seconded, we prefer, perfect Board Bill sixty-five floor substitute. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it. By your vote, you have perfected Board Bill sixty-five floor substitute. Third reading consent.
Board Bill three and Board Bill eleven.
Uh, okay, Board Bill eleven, Alderwoman from the sixth. Are you going to, Alderwoman from the sixth?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Would you please move, um, Board Bill eleven to the third reading informal calendar?
Sharita, please take note of that.
So noted.
The third reading consent.
Board Bill number three.
All right, Alderwoman twenty-fifth, you're recognized on the motion for the third reading consent calendar. Alderwoman twenty-fifth, you with us?
I am, Mr. President. I, uh, make a motion that we approve the third reading consent calendar.
Entertained a second.
Again.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman the twenty-fifth, seconded by the Alderwoman the ninth. Madam Clerk, please call her over.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Igrosia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder. Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderwa- Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Thad.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Baccaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
President Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Calder. Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel.
Aye.
Twenty-two I votes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. By your vote, you sustain the motion of the Alderwoman the twenty-fifth to finally pass your aforementioned board bill. Third reading gross, report of engrossment and final passage.
Board Bill number three.
All right, all other business being suspended, the President will in open session affix his signature here to the end that these may become law. All right. Third, it's resolved, Alderwoman twenty-fifth, you're recognized on the courtesy resolutions calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we approve the courtesy resolutions calendar.
Entertain a second.
Second.
All right, it's moved by Alderwoman the twenty-fifth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh that we approve our courtesy resolutions calendar. All those in favor, signify by, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. First ring of resolutions.
Resolution fifty-three sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, Forest Park Advisory Board Board Member Reappointment for Ms. Khalil Collier.
Alderwoman twenty-seventh, you're recognized for the first reading of resolution number fifty-three.
Thank you, Mr. President. I asked for the, uh, support for Board Bill, was it fifty-three? I'm crazy.
Resolution fifty-three.
Resolution fifty-three.
Entertain a second.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh and seconded by the Alderwoman twenty-fifth that we so please proceed.
Yes, sir, we are, uh, asking for this bill, this resolution to be moved to the, uh, Parks Environmental Committee for it to be vetted. And we're asking for the support of the Board of Aldermen to move this bill, this resolution forward.
Okay, so it's been moved by Alderwoman twenty-seventh, segment Alderwoman twenty-fifth, that we refer resolution fifty-three to Parks. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Madam Clerk, please assign resolution fifty-three to Parks.
So noted. Resolution fifty-four sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, Forest Park Advisory Board Member Appointment for Mr. Mark Mazinski.
Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh, you're recognized for the first reading of resolution fifty-four.
Again, Mr. President, the Board of Aldermen, I ask for the Board to move this resolution to the Parks Committee for vetting of the members of the Forest Park Forever Board.
I have a motion, entertain a second.
Second.
All right, it's been moved the second by the, move by Alderwoman twenty-seven, seconded by Alderwoman twenty-fourth. Uh, I do see two hands up, uh, Alders from the twelve, you were first.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to note that I will have to abstain from this vote as I have previously worked with Mr. Mazinski and still have not a financial tie to Mr. Mazinski, but one that is too close for comfort anyway. So, uh, I will be abstaining. Thank you.
We'd like to request a roll call, sir.
Uh, this, if the clerk is able to just note my abstaining, uh, there's no need for it.
Can you please make note of that?
So noted.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Alderwoman from the twenty-fourth, your hand is up.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick question, since I, I imagine that we're gonna be moving resolutions fifty-three to sixty-one all to Parks. Would it be possible to make one motion to do that, or do we need to go?
I believe we have to go through each one. They all have to be read aloud, sir.
Understood. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ald- Alderman Orion, I, I know it's a lot.
Hi, there's no one who enjoys, there's no one who enjoys brevity and efficiency more than myself, sir. So we went over that in the pre-meeting, but it has to be done this way per rules. Thank you, sir. All right, so it has been moved and seconded that we, uh, take resolution fifty-four and assign it to Parks. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. By your we will now
Resolut-
Sign, yeah, please sign resolution fifty-four to the Parks Committee. Thank you. Please proceed.
Resolution fifty-five sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, Forest Park Advisory Board Member Appointment for Mr. Thomas Milford.
Alderwoman twenty-seventh, you're recognized for fifth, resolution number fifty-five.
Thank you, Mr. President, and, and, uh, Board of Aldermen, I'm asking to, uh, move this resolution to the Parks Committee so this, uh, member can be vetted.
It's been moved that we take resolution fifty-five and move to Parks. Entertain a second.
And.
I didn't get, okay, it's been moved by Alderwoman twenty-seven, seconded by the Alderwoman the eighth, we moved this to Parks. Any discussion? Seeing no hands, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Please assign fifty-five to Parks. Thank you, Sharita.
So noted. Resolution fifty-six sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, Forest Park Advisory Board Reappointment for Ms. Tracy Boas.
Alderwoman twenty-seventh, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, President and members of the Board. I ask that we move this resolution to Parks and Environmental Committee for betting. And I ask for, uh, your favorable vote.
Okay, it's been moved it by Alderwoman twenty-seventh, we refer resolution fifty-six to Parks. Entertain a second.
Second.
Twenty-seven, seconded by the Alderwoman the eighth that we move this to Parks. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Once again, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-seven, Alderwoman twenty-seventh, you are recognized.
I'm lost. What resolution are we?
We're on number fifty-seven.
Okay. Uh, thank you, members of the Board. And, Mr. President, I ask for your favorable, uh, vote for move resolution fifty-seven to the Parks and Environmental Committee to be then, vetted.
All right, uh, we have a motion from Alderwoman twenty-seven, we have a second by Alderwoman the eighth.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'm sorry, did you want me to read it? I didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's been. There's that one. I thought I already heard it.
Resolution fifty-seven sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, Forest Park Advisory Board Member Reappointment for Ms. Nancy Nicoleovich.
All right, Alderwoman from twenty-seven, you're recognized and uh, you've moved this to Parks, entertain a second.
Second.
Okay, move by Alderwoman twenty-seven, seconded by Alderwoman the eighth, that we move this to Parks, uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Why that, we've moved fifty-seven to Parks, Sharita, please make note.
So noted. Resolution fifty-eight sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, Forest Park Advisory Board Member Reappointment for Mr. Andrew Sw- Schwartz.
Alderwoman twenty-seventh, you're recognized for the first reading of resolution fifty-eight.
Mr. President and members of the Board, I ask to move fifty, resolution fifty-eight to Parks and Environmental and for your favorable, uh, vote.
Thank you.
It's been, okay, it's been moved and entertain and, uh, seconded by Alderwoman from the eighth that we assign resolution fifty-eight to Parks. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. Please make note of that, move that to Parks. Thank you, Sharita.
Resolution fifty-nine sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, Forest Park Advisory Board Member Reappointment for Mr. Stephen Ibandal.
Alderwoman from twenty-seventh, you are recognized for the first reading of resolution fifty-nine.
Woo, uh, thank you, Mr. President and members of the Board. I ask for your favorable, uh, vote to move pres- uh, resolution fifty-nine to Parks and Environmental to be vetted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we refer resolution fifty-nine to Parks. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Sharita, please make note of that.
So noted. Resolution sixty sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, Forest Park Advisory Board Member Reappointment for Ms. Gwen Moore.
All right, Alderwoman twenty-seven, you're recognized for the first ring of resolution number sixty.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I ask for your favorable, uh, vote for resolution, which one was it, Sharita?
Sixty.
Sixty, uh, to go to, to be vetted for Parks and Environmental.
It's been moved, uh, seconded by Alderwoman from the eighth that we moved this to Parks. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All right, by your vote, even motion carries. Sharita, please assign that to Parks.
So noted.
All right, last on a hit parade, resolution sixty-one.
Resolution sixty-one sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, Forest Park Advisory Board Member Reappointment for Mr. Andre Walker.
Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh, I recognize you. I recognize you everywhere I go.
Thank you, Mr. President and Pres- uh, uh, members of the Board. Uh, Alderman Orion, this is the last one. And so I've asked for their favorable, uh, consideration to move this resolution to the Parks and Environmental. So, uh, this member can be vetted.
Again.
I have entertained a second. We have a motion from Alderwoman twenty-seventh, seconded by Alderwoman from the eighth that we move resolution sixty-one to Parks. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? We have a lot of ayes and no noes. That's a very ugly, Mr. Potato Head. All right.
That's the.
We assign that to Parks.
So. Better.
Resolution.
Resolution forty-six sponsored by Alderwoman Igrosia, Special Committee on Long-Term Healthcare Facilities.
Alderwoman from the sixth, you're recognized on the adoption of resolution number forty-six.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt resolution forty-six.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderwoman the sixth, seconded by Alderwoman the eighth. Alderwoman, please proceed.
Uh, I renew my motion, Mr. President.
Okay. Seeing no hands or further discussion, it's been moved and seconded, we adopt resolution forty-six. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements, and remember, please, that announcements require a date, time, and place. Thank you.
Monday, July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two, Public Safety will have a meeting at ten AM via webinar. Wednesday, July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, full board meeting, ten AM via webinar. Thursday, July fourteenth, Parks will have a meeting at one PM via webinar. Friday, July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, full board meeting, ten AM via webinar. That's the extent of the announcements.
All right, Alderwoman twenty-six, you have your hand up, so surprisingly.
Of course I have my hand up. Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the Board, and respect, utmost respect for President Ballmer and his announcements about the announcements last week and his repeated announcement about the announcements today. I want to say that I am not going to tell all of my announcements on here, but I will be going live on my Facebook right after the meeting. But if any of my colleagues have anything they want me to share, I will share it in any respective place. Again, we are making the announcements in the right announcement place. Thank you, President Ballmer.
All right, Alderwoman thirteen, you're recognized.
Thank you so much, Mr. President and members of the Board. I'm announcing that tomorrow the Friends of Crandelec Park are hosting a park cleanup in the park uh, from nine AM until noon, meeting at the boathouse and, uh, some firework activity over the last several days, so hoping to get a good crowd to, to pick up. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderwoman. And Alderwoman from the nineteenth, you are recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'm announcing a Huts Committee meeting on Tuesday afternoon at one PM.
All right, Sharita, please make note of that.
Thank you.
So noted.
Thank you very much. Alderwoman from the twenty-fifth, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually, I had seen that the Alderwoman from the nineteenth got disconnected and was going to make the announcement for her, but, uh, she was able to reconnect in time.
All right, thank you very, very, very much. All right, no further announcements. Uh, Alderwoman twenty-fifth, you're.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I just received an email about two other, um, meetings we have. It's actually, we had a public safety meeting Thursday, July fourteenth, ten AM via webinar. And yeah, and I think that's all of them, because Alderwoman made the one for hoods.
All right, okay, thank you very much, Sharita. Alderwoman from the twenty-third, you have your hand up.
Just want to clarify, the, the, then there will be a public safety meeting on Monday and Thursday. So the, I mean, the one on Monday is to the grant for the firefighters. So we will, so there'll be one on Monday and Thursday.
You, you can never be too safe. There you go. All right, with no further discussion, no hands up. Alderwoman twenty-fifth, you are recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President. I begrudgingly make the motion to excuse the Alderwoman from the first ward for necessary absence, although I think that she would rather us uh, not excuse her, but, uh, I'll make the motion.
Entertain a second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by the Alderwoman from the twenty-fifth, seconded by the Alderwoman at the eighth. Please excuse the Alderwoman from Ward one. Alls in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 No.
I believe the ayes still have it. All right. Alderwoman from twenty-fifth, you are recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adjourn until Wednesday, July thirteenth at ten AM via webinar.
All right. All those, entertain a second.
Second.
All, who has been moved? All right, move by Alderwoman twenty-fifth, seconded by Alderwoman twenty-seventh. Uh, we'll adjourn to July fifteenth, ten AM via webinar, all.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Thirteen. My.
Wednesday, the thirteen.
And might have to update my own calendar. Thank you very much, sir. We'll adjourn to July thirteenth, ten AM webinar. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. We are adjourned. Have a wonderful weekend.